निशाय ग्रेनो आर अध्याय रक्षण है राम लेटेस्ट मिल्टेड अपऑन इसे एयर चैप्टर सिक्स रुद्धवोड़ वच्च लक्षण रुकना वर्स तू एंड थ्री अबाउट इट्स टूर्स ऑफ इन ईच वन हैव सिक्स विंग्स विथ तू ही कवर्ड इस पेस विथ तू ही कवर्ड इस फीड एंड विथ तू ही फ्लू एंड वन क्राइट तू अनदर एंड सेड होली 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 इस डी लॉर्ड ऑफ होस्ट डी होल्ड एर्थ इस फुल ऑफ इस ग्लोरी एंड वन क्राइट तू अनदर एंड सेड होली 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 इस डी लॉर्ड ऑफ होस्ट डी होल्ड एर्थ इस फुल ऑफ इस ग्लोरी ही एंड वी फाइंड दें दे वर्स सिंगिंग अट डी लॉर्ड होली 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 इस डी लॉर्ड ऑफ होस्ट डी होल्ड एर्थ इस फुल ऑफ इस ग्लोरी डी बॉल सेज डी पोस्ट ऑफ डी डोर वर्स शेकन बाय देर वॉइस वी फाइंड दें दिस काइंड ऑफ वरशिप वर्स गोइंग ऑन इन डी हैव ही वर्स बीइंग प्रेस दें ही वर्स डी किन और डी अर्मीज सो इसे एयर वर्स वाचिंग ऑल दिस बट ही वर्स अनेबल तू वरशिप सो ही लिसन आउट मच कैंप डी गॉड वर्स सो ही वर्स लिसनिंग तू डी एंजेल्स हुवर्स सिंगिंग तू डी लॉर्ड ही वर्स वाचिंग दें अलसो डी पोस्ट ऑफ डी डोर वर्स बीइंग बट ही वर्स नॉट एबल तू गेट इन वर्षिप समटाइज वी डॉन्ट नो व्हाइट वी नीड तू वरशिप डी लॉर्ड वी वॉच एनी थिंग हो लॉर्ड हस बीन प्रोटेक्टिंग अस सिंस अवर चैनल व्हाट डी ही डू फॉर अवर सेल्युएशन हो डिट डी लॉर्ड गैदर अस आस डी कम्युनिटी सो सेल्युएशन ऑफ ए पर्सन इस वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट आई नोट तू शेयर यू ए स्मार्ट टेस्टिमनी सो तू स्टूडेंट्स दे रोट इंप्लेंस एग्जाम फॉर इंजीनियरिंग आई रिक्वेस्ट यू नॉट तू वेंडर हीर एंड देयर बट तू सिट एंड फोकस ऑन डी वर्ड इट विल बी अन वेरी गुड डिसिप्लिन एंड एवरीवन कैन कांसंटेड ऑन डी वर्ड डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड इस वेरी प्रेशियस सो डी बोथ डी स्टूडेंट्स गोट डी सीट्स सो डी बोथ दे वर्स वेरी हैप्पी एंड वर गोइंग ऑन डी बाइक सो दे मेट विथ डी एक्सीडेंट दे बोथ वर्स अपडेटेड इन डी हॉस्पिटल डी वन हुवर्स राइडिंग डी बाइक डाय सो डी फ्रेंड सिटिंग ऑन डी बैग ही वर्स इन डी आईसीयू इन डी हॉस्पिटल फॉर तू मंथ डॉक्टर सेड सो डी वन हुवर्स इन डी आईसीयू शुड नॉट बी नो डेट हिस फ्रेंड ऑलरेडी डाय इफ ही कम्स तू नो डेट ही विल बेकम एन मेंटली डिसऑर्डेड पर्सन डेट इस व्हाइट सो फॉर तीन मंथ दे नॉट रिवील एनीथिंग आफ्टर तीन मंथ ही कैन तू नो डेट हिस फ्रेंड डाय सिंस डी एडमिशन डाय वर्स क्लोज दे कुड नॉट गेट डी सीट सो इन हिस लाइफ ही लॉस तू थिंग वन हिस फ्रेंड डी सेकंड वाले हिस सीट डी ही नीड्स तू राइट डी एग्जाम अगेन अगेन ही गोट डी सीट सो ही गोट डी रूममेट इन हिस रूम सो डी पर्सन हुव जॉइन इन हिस रूम ही गोट डी सीट लास्ट दे सो ही इवाइटेड हिम तू डी चर्च डी हिंदू फ्रेंड हर्ड डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड एंड गॉड सेड सो डी हिंदू फ्रेंड गोट डी जब इन इसरो एंड ही वर्स सिलेक्टेड इन डी कैंपस सो डी इसरो विल ऑलवेज रिक्रूट डी पीपल डी स्टूडेंट्स हुव डॉन्ट नॉट हैव एनी बैकलॉग्स इन डी फोर ईयर्स सो ही गोट सिलेक्टेड इन डी काउंसलिंग बट ही हैड डी बैकलॉग इन डी थर्ड ईयर सो आफ्टर ही गोट सिलेक्टेड फॉर डी जब हिस कॉन्शन्स वर्स सो एवं तो ही हैव डी बैकलॉग आई लाइट तू डेम सो आई डोंट वांट दिस जब सो ही रोट डी लेटर तू डी मैनेजर अकॉर्डिंग तू डी रूल्स ऑफ इसरो डी शुड नॉट बी एनी बैकलॉग्स आई एम अनवर्ती तू डू दिस जब सो आई वांट तू विट्रो सो बीइंग फॉलोअर ऑफ जिसेस आई कनॉट डू दिस प्लीज फॉरगिव मी सो डी मैनेजर रिप्लाई सो एस्टर्ना इट्सेल डी न्यू रूल हस बीन पास सो डी रूल सेज डेट एवं तो इफ सम्मान हस डी बैकलॉग्स वी कैन कांस्टेट सो नॉट ही वर्किंग अट डी साइंटिस्ट इन बैंगलोर सो व्हाट ही सेड इन हिस टेस्टिमनी सो लॉर्ड इस पर्पस फॉर मी तू गेट सेड इफ डी फ्रेंड मस हैव बीन अलाइव सो आई डोंट आई मस हैव नॉट गोट डी चांस तू स्टे इन डेट रूम सो जस्ट तू सेव मी सो डी लॉर्ड हस मेड डी पर्सन तू डाय सिंह डू यू नो आउट मच वैल्युएबल इस डी इफ आई एम गॉड सेड लॉट ऑफ प्रेम वर्स देयर सो आई डोंट गेट दिस व्हाइट ड्रास सिंपली सो इन मी विलेज प्राय तू मी मादा एंड मिल्कमैट रिसीव कॉप क्राइस आई केयर फ्रॉम ए जेंटाइर फैमिली आई डोंट लाइक तू रिवील मी कैश बिकॉज़ मी कैश डिनॉट सेव मी रिसेंटली आस्क डी ब्रदर व्हाट इस योर नाम ही टोल्ड हिस नाम इस एलिया रेडी सो इन डी किंग्स आई फोन एलिया बट नॉट एलिया रेडी यू शुड नॉट मेंशन अबाउट योर कैश नेवर रिवील अबाउट योर कमेंटी योर फैमिली डेट इस व्हाइट सी बिकेयर क्वीन इन डी प्लेस ऑफ सो डी वर्ड टीचेस अस एवरीथिंग वेरी क्लीयरली माय डियर पीपल
मतला रास मरी चदमू रामचे सिना मेलुन नितिविष्णी अड़िगे वोहि चिन्ह वाटी कल्ला मरी अड़िगे वोहि चिन्ह वाटी कल्ला मरी सार्वमुचा कजे से मतला रास मरी चदमू रामचे सिना मेलुन नितिविष्णी
सिंस अवर कैश डिनॉट सेव अस आई डोंट लाइक तू मेंशन अबाउट इट आई वांट तू शेयर वॉट थिंग अबाउट योर चिल्ड्रन सो व्हेन अब्राहाम वर्स मेकिंग इसे तू लायन डी आर्टर ऑलरेडी इसे कास्ट इस फादर आई रिक्वेस्ट यू तू मूव योर चेक फॉर इसे ऑलरेडी आस्क हिस फादर फादर वेयर इस डी शिप फॉर डी ऑफरिंग अब्राहाम टोल्ड डी लॉर्ड विल टेक केयर एक्चुअली लॉर्ड टोल्ड अब्राहाम डेट आई वांट योर सन तू बी ऑन डी आर्टर बट नेवर ही टोल्ड डी आई विल टेक केयर व्हेन अब्राहाम वर्स ट्राइंग इसे एक ऑन डी आर्टर सो इसे डबल क्वेश्चन डैडी यू ऑलरेडी टोल्ड मी डेट गॉड विल टेक केयर व्हाय यू आर टाइम यू अप सपोज इफ इट इस अवर चिल्ड्रन इन डी प्लेस ऑफ इसे एक इफ वी टाइप तू डाइट डीम अप ऑन डी आर्टर व्हाट दे विल डू सो दे विल से डैडी लॉर्ड स्पोक तू यू सो यू लायन डी आर्टर आई विल ऑफर यू आस डी बंद ऑफ सो सिंस लॉर्ड स्पोक तू यू नॉट तू मी सो यू शुड डू दें व्हाय डिड इसे डिनॉट स्पीक बिकॉज़ अब्राहाम नेवर स्पोक एनीथिंग अगेंस्ट सो इसे एक अलसो नेवर स्पोक एनीथिंग अगेंस्ट यू सर्विस योरसेल्फ टोटली तू डी दें योर चिल्ड्रन विल ओबे यू डेट इस डी वर्ड नेवर वी शुड सी डिसऑबिडियंस इन अवर लाइफ माय डियर पीपल सो डी मिल्कमैट रिसीव गॉस्पल शेयर विथ मी मादा मी मादा डिनॉट हैव चिल्ड्रन फॉर मेनी ईयर्स डेट मिल्कमैट टोल्ड इफ यू बिलीव इन डी लॉर्ड जिसेस ही विल ओपन योर रूम सो डेट मिल्कमैट वर्स इलिट्वरी एंड मी मादा वर्स अलसो इलिट्वरी बट डी लॉर्ड हस अस्टैब्लिश्ड डी फेथ सो आई विल एक्सप्लेन यू डी वे हाउ डी मिल्कमैट रिसीव डी गॉस्पल नीरवाइट गुंटू देयर इस डी प्लेस कॉन्ट मंगलगिरी बिसर्ट डेट दे वर्स डी विलेज वेयर एंड अंदरली मैम वर्स देयर इन डी विलेज सो जॉन वर्स डी पर्सन वर्किंग इन डी हाउस ऑफ सो डी अंदरली पर्सन वर्स डी फार्मर हुव हैड 100 इकल्स ऑफ सो सिंस जॉन यूस तू वर्क फेथफुल इन हिस हाउस दिस फार्मर यूस तू गिव सम ग्रेड तू जॉन सो व्हेन ही लेफ्ट सम ग्रेड फॉर जॉन इन डी फीड डेट डी लॉट ऑफ रेन वर्स कमिंग डी अर्ली मॉर्निंग डी फार्मर वेंट तू डी फीड होल्ड फीड इट वस रेनी बट वेयर डी प्लेस वेयर ही लेफ्ट ग्रेड फॉर जॉन देयर इट वस नॉट रेनी सो डी फार्मर स्ट्रेटवे वेंट तू डी हाउस ऑफ जॉन दिस हैपन्ड अलमोस्ट 90 ईयर्स बैक यू ऑलरेडी नो आउट मच सिवियर वर्स अंटचेबिलिटी एट डी टाइम बिकॉज़ ऑफ डी अंटचेबिलिटी डी फार्मर नेवर वेंट तू डी हाउस ऑफ सो सिंस डी फर्स्ट दे डी फार्मर केम तू डी हाउस योर वाइफ ऑफ जॉन वर्स शौक सर व्हाय डिड यू कम तू अवर हाउस सो तिल दें ही यूस तू केयरेसली एटर्स ही बट नॉट ही से जॉन गारू सो डी वाइफ ऑफ जॉन वर्स शौक सो सी टोल्ड डी वाइफ ऑफ जॉन टोल्ड जॉन इस इनसाइड स्पीकिंग तू गॉड स्टिल इट विल टेक मोर हाफ एन आवर तू कम फ्रॉम प्रेम सो दे डिनॉट एवं हैव डी चेक तू आस्क हिम तू सिट सो देयर दे वर्स डी स्मार्ट स्टोन काइंड ऑफ थिंग हाफ एन आवर आफ्टर हाफ एन आवर जॉन केम आउटसाइड सो डी फार्मर रेट एंड फेल्ट ऑन डी फीड ऑफ जॉन व्हेन ही फेल्ट ऑन हिस फीड दे नॉट अंडरस्टैंड सो डी फार्मर टोल्ड डी गॉड हुम यू आर सर्विंग आई वांट तू फॉलो हिम योर लॉर्ड इस डी ग्रेट गॉड आई अंडरस्टूड डेट ही इस डी होली सेवियर व्हाय बिकॉज़ डी होल्ड फीड इट वस रेनी बट डी प्लेस वेयर आई लेफ्ट ग्रेड फॉर यू इट वस नॉट रेनी सो डेट डे आफ्टर डी फार्मर रिटर्न तू हिस हाउस हिस वाइफ वर्स एंग्री ऑन ही व्हाय बिकॉज़ सी न्यू सी कैन तू न्यू डेट ही वेंट तू जॉन अस वी डोंट नीड यू एनीमोर डोंट कम तू अवर हाउस सो ही नीड तू लिव एवरीथिंग हिस वाइफ चिल्ड्रन एंड फीड्स फॉर डी लॉर्ड सेक सो ही जस्ट हैव डी ड्रेस ऑन हिस बॉडी एंड ही केम तू मी विलेज सो नो वन रिसीव्ड ही सो ही यूस तू ईट डी लीव्स ऑफ टेमरिन ट्री एंड यूस तू ड्रिंक वॉट इन डी लेक एंड यूस तू ही यूस तू प्रेम विथ टेयर्स बाय गोइंग ऑर लॉर्ड ही योर चर्च शुड बी बिल्ड ही एंड सर्वेंट्स ऑफ गॉड शुड राइज डेट वर्स डी प्रेयर डैन बाय ड्रिंकिंग डी वॉट इन डी लेक माय डियर पीपल व्हेन ही प्रेस गॉस्पल डी मिल्कमैट गॉड सेड सो सी प्रेस गॉस्पल तू मी मादा सो मी मादा प्रेस गॉस्पल तू सी व्हाट काइंड ऑफ प्लानिंग गॉड डिड जस्ट तू सेव मी एंड तू ब्रिंग मी तू इस सर्विस जस्ट मेंशन सो बिफोर यू गॉड सेव्ड आउट मेंट पीपल वर यूज्ड बाय डी लॉर्ड सो विथ हुम आउट आउट मेंट पीपल डी लॉर्ड मेंट डायर्स वी थिंक डी लॉर्ड इस यूजिंग अस बट बिहैंड अस डी सेंस हुव दे इन डी फाउंडेशन व्हेन डी हाउस इस बिल्ड वी ओनली सी डी अपर बिल्डिंग बट नेवर वी फाइंड डी स्टोंस इन डी फाउंडेशन ही यूस तू स्लीप अंदर डी टेमरिन ट्री सो ही डायट विथ फीवर फाइनली सो मेंट डेयर्स हुव नोबडी केयर फॉर हिम सो ही डायट यू ऑलरेडी नो डेट डेट वर्स नॉट गुड मै डोंट अंडरस्टैंड हिस फेथ सो एवं आफ्टर ही डायट तू थ्री डेयर्स ही वर्स लाइन अंदर थ्री बिकॉज़ नो वन केयर सो डी मिनिस्ट्री बॉन्ड फ्रॉम डी सैक्रिफाइस ऑफ डेट पर्सन सो व्हाट आई एम एबल तू रिमाइंड सो डू आई रियली रिमेंबर डी डू आई रियली रिमेंबर डी प्रेम्स ऑफ डी सेंस देन ओनली आई विल बी एबल तू ही इसे एयर वास नॉट एबल तू व्हाय बिकॉज़ हिस लिप्स बिकम अनहोली इफ यू आर नॉट रिडीम्ड इन योर लाइफ यू कनॉट वरशिप इफ यू गेट रिडीम्ड यू विल नेवर बी विथाउट वरशिपिंग डिड यू रियली गेट डी मैयर यू आर सिंगिंग और वरशिपिंग डी लॉर्ड वी कैन बाय डेट ओनली वी कैन से सो आर यू एबल तू वरशिप फ्रॉम डी इनर डेथ्स ऑफ डी हाउन सो वी गैदल हीर तू जस्ट वरशिप डी मेबी इन योर लाइफ वी मैन नॉट फाइंड एनी रीजन तू वरशिप डी पॉल एंड सैलस वर इन डी प्रिज़न दे डॉन्ट नो व्हेन दे विल बी कमिंग दे डॉन्ट नो हो दे विल कम आउट डी चेंज हम ऑल ऑफ डेम हाउ पॉल वर्स ही वर्स प्रेसिंग डी ही वरशिपिंग डी लेट अस डिफर तू सांस चैप्टर 147 आफ्टर रिफर्ड तू दिस क्रिचर विल ट्राई तू कंक्रूड सॉरी सांस चैप्टर 142 वर्स 7 ब्रिंग मी सोल आउट ऑफ प्रिज़न ब्रिंग मी सोल आउट ऑफ प्रिज़न डेविड वर्स सेइंग लॉर्ड ब्रिंग मी सोल आउट ऑफ प्रिज़न दें आई विल एबल तू वरशिप यू दिस इस डी वरशिप विच बिलोंस तू डी टेस्टिमेंट व्हाट इस डी न्यू टेस्टिमेंट वरशिप इफ बीइंग इन डी प्रिज़न यू विल वरशिप बिफोर गेटिंग डिलीवर्ड बाय वाचिंग इन डी स्पिरिट ही वर्स एबल तू वरशिप यू मै बी इन चेंज बट स्टिल यू विल वरशिप डी लॉर्ड हार्टफुली एंड यू विल डिलीवर सो डिड पॉल शेड टेयर्स इन डी प्रिज़न सो डिड जॉसेफ फील सैड व्हेन ही वर्स इन प्रिज़न सो डैनल हैव हैड डी अबल क्वेश्चन व्हेन यू ब्रिंग मी आउट डी सो इफ वी हैव सो मेंट सफरिंग सो वी विल कॉल तू सो मेंट पीपल डिड शर्त्रिक मशीन अब इन डी गो आस्ट दें तू ब्रिंग डेम आउट डी ही सिंस योर हार्ट मूड आउट ऑफ डी वेयर वरशिपिंग सो योर माइंड इस गेटिंग फोकस ऑन डी सफरिंग डेट इस व्हाइट नॉट डी रीजन डी लॉर्ड ब्रोट अस सो व्हाट हस डी लॉर्ड तू डू विथ यू एंड मी जस्ट थिंक सो डी लॉर्ड हस फर्स्ट कंप्लीटली डिड ऑल डी क्रिएशन दें ही मेड डी मैन डी लॉस सो इफ लॉर्ड हस क्रिएटेड मैन ऑन डी सेकंड एंड थर्ड डे व्हाट विल हैव सो डी मैन विल से डेट आई एडवाइस डी लॉर्ड तू मेक डी स्काई अस ब्लू सो मैन विल से डेट आई एडवाइस डी लॉर्ड तू मेक डी एर्थ लाइक दिस सो डी लॉर्ड मेड अस इन डी लॉस इन डी क्रिएशन सो ही मेड अस ऑन डी एंड ऑफ डी सिक्सथ ईयर्स ही फर्स्ट मेड डी क्रिएशन ही मेड यू डी लॉस यस सो आफ्टर डी मैन गोट क्रिएटेड व्हाट इस डी फर्स्ट ईयर व्हाय डिड डी लॉर्ड क्रिएट यू जस्ट तू लिव विथ ही एंड तू वरशिप सो यू विल जस्ट लिव वरशिपिंग ही एंड यू टाइप तू पुट योर फिगर इन सो व्हाट हस डी लॉर्ड तू डू विथ सो यू आर नॉट डेमन ही सो यू डोंट हैव एनी रोल व्हाय ही ही क्रिएटेड एवरीथिंग एंड केप्ट यू डी लॉस सो डेट मींस ही डॉन्ट नीड योर एंड मी विस्टर डी बॉल सेज डेट डी लॉर्ड यूस तू डू फेलोशिप विथ एडम एवरीडे सो एडम डिनॉट लाख एनीथिंग इन डी ईडन गार्डन जस्ट स्टैंड बैक एंड सी योर लाइफ सो डू यू लाख एनीथिंग सो व्हेन डी लॉर्ड क्रिएटेड यू ही डिनॉट मेक एनीथिंग लाखिंग फॉर यू सो योर मादा कनॉट डू सच प्लानिंग फॉर यू एवं योर फादर कनॉट डू नो वन एल्स इन दिस वर्ल्ड कैन लव यू सो मच दें डी लॉर्ड हस लव यू आई वांट तू कंक्रूड बाय शेयरिंग एन एग्जांपल इफ एनी वुमेन गेट्स कंसीव्ड सी डोंट नो तिल वन मंथ डेट सी हस बीन कंसीव्ड ब्रदर वी डोंट नो यू नॉट मार्केट हाउ डू यू नो ऑल दिस थिंग जस्ट आई एम सेइंग यू जस्ट जस्ट लिसन डोंट आस्क अबाउट डी हिस्ट्री सो सी विल कंफर्म डेट सी गोट कंसीव्ड आफ्टर वन मंथ एंड सी विल चेंज आफ्टर डेट तू हर पेरेंट्स एंड डी इनलॉस सो डेट वन मंथ सी अलसो डोंट नो डेट यू आर इन डी रूम सो यू डोंट हैव आइस एट डी टाइम यू डोंट हैव लेग्स एट डी सो एवं योर फादर डोंट नो डेट यू आर डी रूम डेट इस व्हाइट डेविड सेज लॉर्ड यू आइस वर्स मी व्हेन आई वर्स इन डी रूम ऑफ मी मादा व्हेन डिड ही सी यू सो व्हेन यू डिनॉट हैव योर आइस लेग्स एंड हेड्स सो नॉट व्हाट आर यू सेइंग माय लविंग वाइफ My loving wife.
नन्नातो प्रेमिंचे पाय
So my love, wife loving me.
आर देलु उज्जविंजिलु नाडा तु प्रेमिस्त
So you will come to know her love if you don't do the job for six months.
सिक्स मस्त बेचने लु ब्रदर अपुन नी माइल्ड अपुन चेली
So after you please six months on bench, you will come to know the love of your wife.
स्नेहित्तुला र
My dear friends.
नीतल्लि कंटे नी बारिकंटे नी तंड्रिकंटे एकुगा प्रेमिंचिन दी यस्त्र प्रभु
More than your mother, father, and wife, the Lord Jesus loves you so much.
अवर नी पर प्रणप्पर्ले
Nobody in this world can lay their life for you.
आकुरति लेरु पुरा इरु चुचे
When I did not have any image, the Lord watched me.
नेनाकु तान
So sometimes I think.
आप प्रेम अत्प्रतिकर नेने अनुचेन्द्स गाल
Can I repay anything back to such love?
नावला होत्या
Is it possible for me?
व्यराधिना जर्म्त विस्तार तय विचि ना देवु निकुरुनु नित्यस्तल
How can I repay to my love even if I give thousands of his support?
जस्त पुत्र निच्छन आईनु नित्यस्तल
Can I repay my love even if I give my entire son to him?
मान येन येमले मनस संत नाव तेल्स मित्त
So we already know that we cannot do anything to repay him.
कनेसु मनोत्यच कोर आराधिन्स्तन लेख पत्न
So if we are not even able to open our mouths and worship the Lord.
मरकमच्छप्पा
I want to share you one more.
सम्मिष्ट नयां दिन
This American document.
यसु प्रभुतो
To the Lord Jesus.
अया मापित्र नहि लारो तुम्ना आराधिन्स्तन
So our father's house, they used to worship on this mount.
कानि यस्त्रे नाराधिन्स्तन
But we are supposed to worship in the Jerusalem.
आराधिन्स्तन नि पेत्रला नाम तेल्स
She knew that the father's house were worshiping.
आनि यस्त्रे नाराधिन्स्तन करक्ता नाम तेल्स
She knew that they are supposed to worship in Jerusalem.
आनि आम आराधिन्स्तन
But never she worshiped the Lord.
एन्कि
Why?
आराधिन्स्तन नवर तप्पुला विद्यस्त निगन अमेद्दु आराधिन्स्तन
She knew the fathers of the people who were worshiping, but why she himself, herself, were not worshiping?
आने पर्सिपिन वोचिरिस्त
Why? Because she was living in sin.
यसु नी सम्तरक्षुर्गा लेदु काबन्दु आराधिन्स्तन
Since you doesn't have Lord Jesus as your personal savior, you are not worshiping.
यस्त्र प्रभु नी अंतरुनु चेस्कु लेदु काबन्दु आराधिन्स्तन
Since you did not receive him in your inner heart, you are not able to worship.
व्यर्पण प्रभु निनि रक्षण अंगिल अच्छ
If you must have accepted him as the personal savior.
रक्षण आवर नु संडे निक्स आल्लेक्स नु जाप जय
So you will not go for the work even if you are offered one like dollars.
एन्कि
Why?
आसम्माइते जाप वधिल्लस्त
If it is needed, you will leave the job.
निवेचिस्काल्ल
You cannot unchance.
प्राप्तन चेयर कर्न उन्नाडानकी एटिस्काल्लेप्पर दानी
Daniel was not able to get compromised to be without prayer.
मर्दन मुच्चागु संगत एटी
What about his job?
तार प्लानो संगत
What about his life?
यस्त्रे ने बाइक किटकी तार पुल्टे चिमुमार प्राप्तन चेस
So he was praying thrice by opening the windows to worship Jerusalem.
प्रिल्लरा क्रास्तुरु राजी पड़ेवार क्रास्तुरु दिदु
My dear people, a person who gives compromise is never a Christian.
प्रिल्लरा नीति मतलु सिमोहमले उन्तारन बाइबल
The word says that the righteous lives like the lion.
सिमोह एक्रम राजी पडित
Will the lion get compromised anywhere?
मन नीव नेन इंदुक्ला एक्वत
Why you and me are getting compromised?
एक्वडो सम्थिन इस रोम
Something was went wrong.
मान बक्ती जीवतुल्लो लेखुलो तेड़ा उन्दे
There is something fault in our devotion.
मान अदुले एक्वडो तेड़ा पोय
Somewhere we are wrong in our foundation.
आइन रत्तु मान कोनुदान संगत मान मच्छपत
We are forgetting that he purchased us with his blood.
दजेस्मन प्राप्त जय
Let us all pray to the Lord. We need to examine the word very carefully.
मान देवु मान प्रतिकोलम जास्त अम्कोलम जास्त
So our Lord, will he do the things against us or in favor of us?
नी जीवतुल्लो नी कलिहिन ये समवन नैन चुरुन्दी आइन नी कनुकुरुम चेस्याडो प्रतिकोलम चेस्याडो
In your life, whatever you have faced, just think, "Did he do it against you or in favor of you?"
फेवर प्रिल्लरा ये विष्णुलो कुरा आइन मानको प्रतिकोलम चिन्दवार्क
He never does anything against us.
योसेफ लेडर याको बाल्पुन्नाडो
Jacob felt that Joseph was no more.
मानु चप्पली योसेफ उन्नाड
Is Joseph there or not?
Yes, yes मान सिमियन लेड अंतगा मान सिमियन उन्नाड लेड
He is saying Simeon is no more. Just think.
इपुर बेन्यामिन गोर्दिस्कुल पोथर अंतगा नाडो बेन्यामिन देवु युद्धियो आयुत्तु दिस्काल्तुनाडो आयुदंतल एकु पेट्टे योसेफ बेन्याम
So he is saying you want to take Benjamin also. Just imagine why the Lord want to take Benjamin to Egypt. You mean fivefold.
यस्त्र नी देवु ईसिप गवर्नर गा चेस
The Lord made Joseph as the governor of Egypt.
सिमियनु गवर्नर अंडोलो उन्नाड
Simeon was in the custody of the governor.
बेन्यामिन नी गवर्नर बिल्स्तन
Governor was calling the Benjamin.
देवु याको कुटुमानी प्रेमिंचिन अंतगा ये कुटुमानी प्रेमिंस्न लेदमारु पुन्तन नेनुकुन्स
Sometimes I think that the way the Lord loved the family of Jacob, he did not love anyone else.
आयुत्तु एक्का आयुत्तुरु करुकाल
So when there was famine in Egypt.
अंदरु रोकलीच्छितान्य गोर्कुनारो याको सम्तान वक्केत डबली कोल्ड बियर दिसु
So everyone was buying the grain, but only the family of Jacob got it for free.
वाक्य
The word says.
वर इन्त प्रेम देवु याको कुटुमानी प्रेमिंचिन अंतगा ये कुटुमानी प्रेमिंस्न लेदमारु पुन्तन नेनुकुन्स
When Lord was showing so much love for the family of Jacob, why Jacob was saying, "The Lord is doing against me."
नी जीवतुल्लो नाजीवतुल्लो प्रभु एक चेस्न
In your life and my life, what
वातर्जिन्दि ओक्सार कुट्ट चेस्कुन
Let us remember those things.
अवर नी मान प्रतिकोलम उन्नाय सुन्ना अम्कोलम उन्नाय
Are we feeling that they are against us or in favor of us?
नी कनुकुरु नागर कन्नीचिन अकेती
If you feel that in favor of you.
वन्नटु प्रभु दोरुन जीविंस
Never you will live away from the Lord.
प्रति रोज प्रभु को केदु चय्यादने एप्पेक्षण जीवतुल्लो
You will have a burning desire in your life to do something for the Lord every day.
मानु नायंतो प्रेमिंचेडने वास्तुम
It is true that he loved us so much.
शानि मान अंतरुनु जीवतुल्लो परेक्षण चुचिन्नु गुड
So maybe examine our inner hearts.
मानु प्रभु समीपुन्ना जीविंचे जीवतुल्लो मानु लेदेमो लेदेमो कुट्लन
So I feel that we are not at all in the way of life which is closer to the Lord.
एन्कि नी याको बेला तालच चुरुन
Why Jacob was feeling like this?
मानु कुरा एन्कु देवु लागे चेस्याडो नाइन प्रश्निस्त
So sometimes we also question the Lord, "Why did the Lord do the..."
मान वाक्य नी चेप्पुन्ना मान चोद
Let us see what the word says.
यास्तो जीवतुल्लो आपन केल्ला
Let's go into the further part of
आयुत्तु एक्का करुकाल
That was the period of famine.
योसेफ गवर्नर गवर्नाडो
Joseph was the governor.
इपुर योसेफ देगरकी धानी पस्सम अनुकुमारु बेल्य
So the sons of Jacob went to Joseph for buying the grain.
आयुत्तुरु धानी मुन्नन चेप्पि पम्पिचिन याको बे
Jacob himself told them that there was grain available.
योसेफ अनु अन्नो चुचिन्नु योसेफ अनु कुट्टु बेट्टे गरी वाल योसेफ अनु कुट्टु बेट
When Joseph saw his brothers, he identified them, but they did not identify Joseph.
इक्कर ओक्क पाटनि प्रभु मान
So here the Lord teaches such one lesson.
नी वोपुकुन्ना नपुडु नी अंतरुनु ना पापुन्ना पुडु गैयिंस्वल्सीन विष्णु गैयिंस्ले
So when you have unconessed sin in your inner heart, you will not realize the things which you need to realize.
आनि योसेफु सुमार्गा एरुएरुन्डल क्रेतो पड़कुटु मधिक दोरुम येडनि बाइबल चप्प
The Bible says that it was twenty-two years that Joseph was away from his family.
वालो अन्नो कुरा योसेफु चुसिया एरुन्डले
So it was the same time period that the brothers also
ओके सार वाल रुड्डपयारो
So at the same time, they got separated.
मान योसेफ वालुन कुट्टु बेट्ना पुडु वालुन दु योसेफुन कुट्टु बेट
When Joseph was able to recognize them, why they were not able to recognize them?
अंतरुनु नोक दास्तु बन्न दापुन्न
Since in their inner hearts, there was
योसेफु वालु गोठलो गेस्याडो
They threw him into the pits.
तंड्रिको अपत्ति जेप्पेरु
They write to their father.
ये विष्णु वालु अन्नो वोपुकुले योसेफ देगर वोपुकुले याको देगर
They never repeated this before Jacob or Joseph.
काबट्टी वाल गैयिंस्कुला
That is why they were not able to recognize them.
नी जीवतुल्लो दास्तु बन्न पापुन्न अकेती
In your life, if you have a hidden sins.
नी जीवतुल्लो देवु येन्नो गप्पुविनि मुन्नु बेट नावली गैयिंस्कुले
Maybe the Lord may keep many great things before you, but you could not recognize them.
अस्त्रहस्त पापुन्न जीवतुल्लो ख्यमक
So the hidden sins are not safer for your life.
प्रिल्लरा इपुर योसेफ वालु कुट्टु बेटी वानाडिक निर्यावर
So now Joseph recognizes them and asks them, "Who are you?"
मेवो ओक्क तंड्रिकुमार्डो
We belong to your father.
मेवो डाइजनु क्रिकेट टीम मारी
So we are twelve people, we are like a cricket team.
ओके योसेफु लेड
So Joseph is not there no more.
नान
So we are ten people.
एक्स्ट्रा प्लेयर बेन्यामिन अपुन्न
So the extra player Benjamin was his father.
योसेफु तोने योसेफ चच्चपड़न जप्पन रेटिक चार्सीनियम
So with Joseph itself, they were saying, "Joseph was no more."
नी मिलागर कुच्चि दिवनी कर्ते चप्पे नाक
After they said that Divena is no more, so how I feel?
मान योसेफु चेप्पुन्नारु योसेफ लेड
So with Joseph, they are saying, "Joseph is no more."
आको अबे मोस्त गणिन्दी वाल गजमोस्त
So the nettle grass, I just thought
योसेफ योसेफ मोस्त गणिन्दो वाल कुमारु बाइंकर वे मोस्त
So Jacob itself was a deceiver and there are more deceivers.
अन्ताने काव चेस एन्नार बासाड एक्स प्रिल्लरा याको कुमारु गर्बन वधि पदिमदिम मोस्त गण बेट को चरने संगत मिन गुट्टुन्स
You need to remember that ten people, ten deceivers came from the womb of Jacob.
ओनो नी पापुन नी वड्डल वेहिमर्तद
So just remember that your sin will always be in you.
नी एक चेस्तो वो सेल्फ स्टेट नेव निकलल चेस्त
Whatever mistake you do, your children also will do the same.
दाविद बक्षेभ तो पाप्पर्जेस
David committed sin with Bakhshabha.
दाविद कुमारु अब्सलो दाविद अप्पत्र तो पाप्पर्जेस
So his son Absalom committed sin with the concubine.
दाविद कुमारु अम्मोनु दाविद कुमार्तेन तामर तो पाप्पर्जेस
Also his son Amnon has spoiled his daughter, Tamar.
प्रिल्लरा सुलमानु वेवचार पाप्पर्जेस
We find that Soluman was in the sin of adultery.
दाविद पापुन दाविद कुटुमान विच बेट
The sin of David did not leave the family of David.
बागविनु नु आर्गुमेंट चेस्तु तवा नी पिलल निप आर्गुमेंट चेस्त
Listen carefully, if you are doing always the argument, your children also will do the same.
ओबे होत वा नी पिलल ओबे
If you obey, your children will obey.
नी एक पापुन चेस्तो वो रेप अदे पापुन नेव निकलल चेस
So whatever sin you do, the same thing will be seen in your
याको इस्साक्तो अपत्ति चेप्पे
So we find Jacob lying twice.
याको की याको पिलल अपत्ति जेप्पेरु
Also we find that the children of Jacob lie to him.
बागविनु
Listen carefully.
देवनी वाक्य
This is the word.
So now what Jacob was saying to them?
Genesis, chapter forty-three, verse five and six. But if you will not send him, we will not go down. For the man said to us, you shall not see my face unless your brother is with you. And Israel said, why did you deal so wrongfully with me? As to tell the man whether you had still another brother. I still have a doubt whether he got converted. Why did you tell that man that still you have another brother? So you again asked you, but you did not get my plea? Why did you tell that man that you still have a- Yes, since he asked, again and again we told him we would not have changed. So there the Lord's spirit wrote one thing. In the verse six, we find, and Israel said- Why did the Lord mention the name as Israel? So in the forty-second- Forty-second, thirty-six, we find two- In the forty-third chapter, we find Israel. The Lord turned him as Israel. Here we find that the sow was finished off, switched off, but not smoked. My dear people. So you have also been converted. You have been part-taking in the convent. Is your nature crucified by the cross? That is very important. So we find Samuel anointing Saul. But did he nature, his nature die? So Lord made Samson as a nursery. Did he come out of the sin of adultery? Many times you are not able to understand the word in the right manner. Why did you reveal that still you have another brother? Still Jacob want to love the untruth. So if he still gets a chance, he won't- So such a person, how can he find the things of- Without your nature being died, how can you build a righteousness and- So he says that Joseph, Samuel, Benjamin are normal. In our lives, our own nature should be crucified with the cross. The word speak to us. We need to examine ourselves and move forward. We can find one more far than the life of Jacob. We find that since Jacob loved Joseph so much, he gave him, he gave him a special role. So now, Lord has took Joseph everywhere. If you love anyone who are the Lord, so he will only left with the tears. So Jacob did not learn the lesson which he experienced before- He is loving Benjamin still more. So the Bible says that if Jacob leaves Benjamin, Jacob will die. Genesis, chapter forty-four, verse thirty-one. It will happen when he sees that the land is not with us, that he will die. So they both, their lives are tied together. So even though Joseph was away from Jacob for twenty-two years. So Jacob did not learn the lesson that why the Lord took him away from me? Again, he is repeating his mistake. Lord will surely give you time to rectify your mistakes. If you still want to continue the same- So you cannot realize that any kind of miracle which God has- So the Lord has been taking Jacob to Egypt to bless Pharaoh. So after that, we find that Joseph was shoveling love on Benjamin. So the days of sadness are going to close after seeing- For which Jacob has been crying through all these years, he is going to see- So many things God has prepared. Jacob has been continuing in the same mistake. So when you got saved, did you really correct yourself? Are you still continuing with the same- So you don't have any blessing before. Also, you will not be a blessing to the church. Lord will give us great chances to rectify ourselves. So we find Anias lied to Peter. He died. So his wife Samira came within a period of three hours. Again, Peter asks, you saw this for how long? Again, she told yes. A young man who carried away your husband is still waiting. That means the Lord gave a time period of three hours for- So Lord gave forty years for the king Saul. Lord gave twenty years for the judge Samson. Samson was doing the mistakes again and again. Let us refer Judges, chapter fourteen, verse two. Judges, chapter fourteen, verse two. And he came up and told his father and his mother and said, I have seen a woman in the chimney of the daughters of the Philistines. Now therefore get her for me twice. So Samson was saying, the daughter of Philistine- He was not supposed to marry. The mother's womb, he was a nursery. Even before taking birth, Lord gave many instructions. Never you should touch wine. She was instructed by the Lord to be careful. Now Samson want to go for a married life. So Samson married her. See, how many days he had a married life? So Judges, chapter fourteen, verse fifteen. And he came to pass on the seventh day, that they said unto Samson's wife, entide thy husband, that he may declare unto us the riddle, lest we burn thee and thy father's house with fire. Have you called us to take that we have? So then we find the bridegroom giving a feast to all the people. So I think receptions were there in that time. So the Bible teaches us everything clearly. Samson was the person who started the Western culture. So while going in the car, you will take the bread and coffee. So Samson started that scene. Judges, chapter fourteen, verse nine. And he took therefore in his hand, and went along eating, and came to his father and mother. So he was going, went along eating. So we can find the things belonging to Western culture. My dear people. We are not reading the words. So if we read it, we will recognize- Now he need to offer a feast. So now he told a story that- So you need to tell, like, there is a sweeter thing which came out of a stone. Philistines could not solve it. So they came to the wife of Samson. So if you don't find the meaning of the story, we will burn down you and your father's house. On the seventh day, she was crying. So if the wife cries, any person should come down. Samson revealed the thing. So his wife went to reveal to the sardar. So Samson was saying, if you are not proud with my hair, you have not solved my- He became angry. So I loved my wife so much, she went and told the secrets. So usually the wife, when she becomes angry, she went to her father's house, but here, he was, he went to his father's- See Judges, chapter fourteen, verse twenty. But Samson's wife was given to his companion, whom he had used as his friend. Nineteenth loss. So his anger was aroused, and he went back up to his father's house. His anger was aroused. He knows a dedicated life, but doesn't know how to be in a married life. So his father gave his wife to the companion. Now his anger got thrown. So he is now coming to visit his wife. So let us come into chapter fifteen, verse one. After a while in the time of wheat harvest, it happened that Samson visited his wife with a young goat. And he said, let me go into my wife, into her room. So will anybody bring some flowers to the wife or a young goat? We cannot find such a husband in the Bible. So he doesn't know what to give to a wife. So while bringing the young goat, his father told- I thought you hated her, so I gave to your companion. My dear people. Be careful. See, even if he married the daughter of the Philistine, the Lord made her two marriages come back. Only few days he had the married life. That also filled with great agony. Now he is going to the city of Gaza. So when Lord deluded him from the daughters of the Philistines, he went to the prostitutes in the city of Gaza. So Judges, chapter sixteen, verse one. Now Samson went to Gaza and saw a horlet there, and went into her. When the Gazettes were told, Samson has come here, they surrounded the place and lay in wait for him all night at the gate of the city. They were quiet all night, saying in the morning, when it is daylight, we will kill him. And Samson lay low till midnight, and he arose at midnight, took hold of the doors of the gate of the city and the two gate posts, pulled them up, bathed and all, and put them on his shoulders, and carried them on the top of the hill that faces him. The people of the city closed the doors. Tomorrow morning, you will catch one of him. Samson doesn't know when he will sleep and when he will get up, he rose at the midnight. So he took hold of the doors of the gate of- So usually, he watched what he do. If something comes in our way, he will take it and say. So he took the doors in turn to and kept it in light. So he doesn't have the brain, what he is doing. So what is that, taking the young goat to the wife? Why he became angered and went to the father's house? My dear friends in the Lord. The Lord has helped him to escape from the daughters of Philistine. So now, since he is following Western culture, he went to the- Lord helped him to escape from the horlets. Now he came to the woman called Delila. So he lost the anointing along with his hair. Samson never asked God to help him to come out. We find that he prayed to the Lord only two times in his lifetime. But the grace of God was upon Samson. Lord has been rescuing him from place to place. Finally, he was getting surrendered in the hands of Israel. Do you know who has really started the suicide? Own suicide. So he prayed, I need to die, and I also need to make these Philistines die. Actually, Prabakaran, the head of the LTT terrorist crew, he used to be a nominal Christian, he used to study the Bible. After reading this, he got an idea. So in the word, we find that all through his lifetime, whom ever he killed, so the number was greater on his, the last name. Even though you are not asking, for his name's sake, the Lord may rescue. You need to correct yourself before the period of grace gets close. So after some time, the grace was removed upon Samson. So are you doing the mistake again and again? Are you really neglecting or misusing- Are you walking in such a manner that his will is failing? Jacob loved Joseph also Benjamin. That is why he finds everything against- If you correct yourself. You will come to know the great purpose of the Lord in your life. So the thief, who was on the cross, he told that Jesus did not do any crime. We are forty, so he corrected himself. Lord, please remember me when you come with your kingdom. I feel that he was the best person this world. So when Lord Jesus said his blood, this thief was the first person to be cleansed in the- So the Lord gave him a great privilege which no one else has. Also, Lord gives you and me such chances. Yes, when we come for a word to- So again, the Lord has given us a chance to correct ourselves. My dear people. I want to share with you the third thing. Genesis, chapter forty-seven. Verse eight and nine. Pharaoh said to Jacob, how old are you? And Jacob said to Pharaoh, the days of the years of my pilgrimage age are one hundred and thirty years. Few, and he will have been the days of the years of my life. So the days of the years of my pilgrimage age are one thirty years. But the years of my life are few and evil. See, what a kind of question a Jedi was asking to the- See, how old are you? How many years you lived for God? So when you live very little for the Lord. So how can you recognize the things which are not prepared for you? So they are very little. They are few and evil. That is what he witnessed in front of Pharaoh. So in your life, how can you witness? How many years passed that you won't say? So are there, like, the years which you lived for God? In the year nineteen ninety-two, I accepted Lord as my personal saint. At that time, I was studying. So in the year nineteen ninety-six, April, I finished my studies. In the ending of March, Lord helped me to write- So after I got saved, I started to pray, Lord watch- Around thirty-nine months, Lord helped me to spread in prayer. The Lord called me for his ministry in the nineteen ninety-six October. So because of his grace, I signed this. So after getting saved. I never used my time to visit sightseeing. Never I wasted any day in my life. This is twenty-four, after getting saved, this is twenty-four. So this is twentieth year in the ministry. So my past life is of nineteen years. So my same life is of twenty-four years. So that is why I am praising the Lord. I don't have Facebook and Goggle. I don't have only Bible book. I don't have anything to do with photos. I don't have anything to, to the sins. There is no need for me to change a photo every day in the WhatsApp. So God gave me a very precious salvation. I don't need gold and silver. I don't need Facebook. So I have another G for having photos. So they cannot bring me up. I don't need to show where I am ministering to the people. So I don't need to explain to anybody else. So every minute, the Lord came with this. So I need to spend it for the Lord. So one time, I went to preach God's word. Near nineteen ninety-nine. So the brothers there asked me to come and see the place there, where the rockets will be launched. So that place, they asked me to come and visit. So I told them that I will come. I was praying. So the Lord asked me one thing. So why did I bring you here, to preach the gospel or to visit the sights? So again, in the morning, I told them. Please, brother, I cannot come. The Lord did not permit me. So if I have that one hour, I can spend with the Lord. So I was saved from doing the mistake because I was supposed to. So in your life, after you got saved, for which you are using- So are you using the time to spend with your friends? Even on Sundays, you are going and participating with them. You have forgotten that it was a holiday. So how old are you? So how many is passed by after you- So how much time you spent for the Lord after coming here? Please don't feel that I'm criticizing you. I'm just sharing the word with you. So the word is speaking to you and me. Let us examine ourselves. So we should not be, we should not live in such a way that we will feel sad in our older days. So Joseph sent some chariots to bring Jacob. So Jacob need to get it to them and come. So the sons of Jacob told that, Joseph, that is the governor sent some chariots to bring you. So Jacob did not ask his sons, many years back, you lied to me that Joseph died, but now you are saying Joseph is asking me to come, why you has hidden this? Why he did not question the sons? Because he did, he was not corrected in his life. So when we are not corrected. So it is not possible for us to correct our- When you leave, then only you can do that. So Daniel lived for the Lord in that- So we are supposed to live for the Lord like that. If we go into the depths of the life of Jacob. Genesis, chapter forty-seven. So Genesis, chapter forty-six, verse three.
So he said, I am God, the God of your father. Do not fear to go down to Egypt, for I will make of you a great nation. I will go down with you to Egypt, and I will also surely bring you up again. And Joseph, I will put his hand on your eyes.
So Joseph will put his hand on your eyes. So why Joseph need to lay his hand on the eyes of- He fought with the Lord and war came. But the Lord said, Joseph will put his hand on his eyes? Why? Still Jacob, his eyes were able to see. Let's come to the spiritual meaning. So Jacob did not have the spiritual eyes. He did not have a eyes which sees the works of God. So Jacob got into the chariot sent by Joseph. So many days back, Jacob was angry with Joseph. Where Joseph shared his dream with Jacob. So me, your mother, your brothers will obey you. So he repented him. But still he did not correct our- So he was blind spiritually. That is why Lord said Joseph will put- They have the outward eyes. To be in a spiritual eyes. Are we really able to walk with the realization of the spiritual eyes? I want to remind you once. So in the New Testament, when Saul got converted to- So Judas received him. The Bible says Paul was in the house of Judas for three days. So the Lord instructed Anias to go and pray for Paul. So Anias says to the Lord that this man did much harm to the Philistines. So if Anias was not ready to even pray for Paul, will he put him in his house? So Anias felt that, Lord, you asked me to pray, if I close my eyes and pray, he may take his knife and kill me. So praying is different and realization is in the heart while working in- So Anias laid his hand on Paul and prayed. Judas kept him in his house. Three days, he was fasting, no ice, no food and water. So what could have been the situation of- If our spiritual eyes are open. So we will observe the godly purpose and walk according. Judas realized, why God mistook Paul? So Judas kept him in his house. So after three days, he received eyesight. Received baptism. He went forward. Here we find, so Judas led him in prayer, but Anias gave him baptism. I praised the Lord that Judas was not- You have stolen my sheep. This belongs to me. I don't understand the mind of Telbu people. So he laid his hands on him and baptized. Judas knew his call. My calling is to lead in prayer that- My calling is to lead in prayer that. So he gave a gift of healing. He gave him grace to baptize. So never Judas preached to Paul with a negative mind. That is what is called spiritual realization. So Paul says. So due to enemy attitude to opposition, the gospel has been preached. By any means, the gospel has been preached. We should have a wide heart. So then our eyes will be open. So we need to see what Lord has did for us. So Lord says, Joseph will keep his hands on your eyes. So there is a great need for our spiritual eyes to be opened. We can see his words only if he opens our eyes. So Paul, Peter writes in his letter. There is a great danger that we will become blind. First Peter. So second Peter, chapter one. Verse nine. For he who lacks these things, is short-sighted, even to blindness, and has forgotten that he was cleansed from his old sins. Blindness and short-sighted. See how clearly Peter mentioned. We need to be careful not to become blind. In our life, the purpose with which Lord saves us is very great. Lord calls us to be a great blessing to many generations. So how many of us have that burning desire to become the light of this world? May the Lord keep his hands on our eyes. He will make him open our eyes. So may his purpose in calling us to be fulfilled totally. Never we should criticize anybody. Always, we focus on the gift of God. So never we judge others. I want to share a small example. So this is a story, like RCM people in the heaven, whoever are coming, they are just greeting them and sending them inside. So the CSA background people, they are offering cold drinks and making them to sit. So salvation people were taking care of all the needs of the people. So immediately the Pentecostal people. So the dead, when hastily they fell into the hell. So what is the opinion of Pentecostal people? So whoever doesn't have the spirit. Pentecostal people say that we are the goat heaven. CSA people says. So they said that the Lord has chosen us to be a working. So the RCM people wanted. So the Catholic people say that Protestants here from us, you are handicapped people. So the Lord will judge the Catholic people. So whether CSA people are correct or not, Lord will judge. We doesn't need to do. So we have millions of people in front of us who are. If you see the continent Africa. So we doesn't understand how can we reach out them for the Lord. First time when I went to Africa. So in the midnight, a brother was knocking the door. So I told the brother who was with me, I told him, go and open the door. So he said, if we open the door, they will come and kill us. So I told, let us at least open the window and ask. So when we asked from the window, he asked, I am not getting sleep, I am hungry, can you please give me a biscuit? The night time, because they are unable to control the hunger, they used to kill the monkeys and chimps. I am not blaming anybody. So I decided, by the grace of God, I reached our fifteen countries. So no one could offer food or offering to us. Why? So they themselves doesn't have anything to eat. So what can they offer to the person? So morning, they take a cup of. So for the lunch, they boil two potatoes, so two bananas and wheat. For the dinner, they will just eat a piece of biscuit. So in Africa, there are four missionaries who were sent from a village. Lord has established two churches. One group, one church for the African group and one for Indian group. So I went to dedicate those churches. So Dr. David Chickenbutter, who from US also came with me. So the church was constructed, but not the rooms for the ministers to stay. So they offered food for us under a tree outside there for uncle and me. They gave us two boiled eggs. So we have taken the cover of the boiled egg and we will eat. So I took hold of the pieces of that cover of the boiled egg. So uncle doesn't have a sight for one eye and another has little sight. So we call it small eye. So I gave those pieces and asked him to throw it away. So going aside, he started to eat those. So there are around seventy to eighty children. They don't have clothes and shovs to take bath. They doesn't know how chappals will be. So the bananas in Africa are very long and they are. So I took, I took out the peel and gave it to uncle. Even after a year, I took the two peels. So I understood that if I threw, if I throw it away, it will eat. So after we started in the car, after going some distance, I down the mirror and threw it. In the side mirror, I watched. So just to have that, the children were running and coming. So how much food will be wasted in US, Canada and Australia? When we can reach out such people. So for which we are using our money? Our time for which we are using? So we will spend all our money for the. What is your role in the global evangelism? So in the Lord's name, every Nisha bow. So every marksman pray same. I want to ask you one question. So for yourself, how much money you are? So for the Lord, how much you are spending? You are saying that your life is. You say your sacrifices. You say your time is his. So how much part you have given to the Lord? So how much it will be good if the Lord keep his hands on your eyes? Let us read the fourth verse again. So Genesis chapter forty-six, verse four. I will go down with you to Egypt, and I will also surely bring you up again. And Joseph will put his hand on your eyes. Joseph will put his hand on your eyes. So may the Lord keep his hands on our eyes. So already many years passed by in our lives. So we need to realize that our spiritual eyes are still not open. So that is why Paul mentions in a fashion that your spiritual eyes should be open. That is why since his eyes were open. His education and money is seen not to be grateful. His classmates were great officers in Asia. But he lived a life which was stepped down in the dirt. So he said, I know how to be. I know code, I know how to be without clothes. So I still need to share many things. So why did Paul choose sufferings? While experiencing the suffering, he said one thing. That sufferings of these days are not at. In front of the great glory which I am going to face. So this brother used to work on people's. So while studying ninth standard, he came to the church to learn. So he worked as a software engineer for eighty years. So Lord gave him a calling to do his ministry. So he is one merchant in his family. So his father died in his childhood. So he has the responsibility of the family. So he submitted his sister and mother to the power table, came to the ministry. So his sister also came to the ministry. So his mother also is part taking in the ministry. So what is important for you in your life? So is the Lord who kept his life is important for you? Always he does the things in favor of you. Never he makes anything against you. So he should give us such praise. I want to remind you one more thing. So when Jacob came to the time of death. So he was speaking about all the sins in the forty-ninth chapter of Genesis. So Jacob had a daughter. So till he never spoke anything about his daughter Deena. So we find that the prince of the nation spoiled her. So we find those things written in Genesis chapter thirty-four. So God gave only one daughter and he lost her. So Jacob was unable to think about the things which he lost, the things given by the Lord. So in the forty-ninth chapter, Jacob prophesied about all the twelve sins. But what about the daughter Deena? Why he lost her? So when Jacob met Israel. So Israel called Jacob to come with him. So then Jacob did not go. With the lacking of time, I am cutting short, so Israel went to Syria. So Jacob came to Syria. So then he purchased the land and he consecrated tents and stayed there. So the prince of Syria came and spoiled Deena, we find that. So due to his own thoughts, he lost. Suppose if he must have obeyed his brother and went with him, so he must have saved his daughter. Are you really walking with your own thoughts in your life? Then you will lose the things which Lord gave you. So you cannot see the things which the Lord is going to do. I need to see the things which Lord prepared for me. I always feel a little bit very glad if the global evangelization happens to. Through Indians, if the global evangelization happens. So I need, that should be my sight. Friday, I shared with you that I was supposed to die in the womb of my mother. The Lord made me alive. He saved me. He gave me a grace to live as a celibate for. He helped me to spend myself hundred percent for the Lord. So I should not have my own thoughts in this. So these own thoughts are not good for us in our lives. We are about to pray. So everything the Lord made in favor of us. We need to see them. Still millions of people did not receive God's. So as our duty, we need to build the kingdom of God. Let us pray.